Hello everyone and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley and today we are joined by Kim, Greg, and Amanda. And today we are going to be talking about marketing credits and specifically what that means for your business, what these are, how do you get them? What does it even mean to have them? And of course, how does this all tie into how you communicate with your leads, with your members, and with your team? So speaking of team, how's it going guys?
It's going wonderful. Great. I have two dogs that are going nuts right now, so I apologize if you can hear their barking. It must be the warm weather.
Our bushes, yeah, we've got people trimming our bushes out here too right now, so it's probably gonna be noisy.
Gotta be one of those days and that's okay, right? We're all in this together.
Exactly, it's getting to be summer.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting to that point. Things are getting greener. Although the weather didn't get the memo here in New York City, it's like forty something degrees today, which is just insane to me. It's almost May and it feels like, I don't know, December? Or maybe that was like December growing up in Alabama, I don't know. Anyway, hey everybody, welcome. Let us know where you're coming in from. For those of you who are kind of confused, well, what do you mean, marketing credits? What's that? Some of you know what this is intimately because you've been confused by it. Others, you're gonna be learning about sort of the currency, the powers, our platform, in terms of how you text and email the people that you're connected to. So I've got some slides to go through with you guys. We'll go through that and then we'll open up the floor to questions, including questions that aren't just related to email and texting. If you've got those, then we've got an opportunity to serve you here today too. So let's get over to our slurs. Alright, could you see my screen okay guys?
Yes.
Alright, perfect. So today on the Get Growing Weekly Work Session, we're talking about the currency that drives your business communications. So today what we're gonna talk about are your Get Oil-ing marketing credits. What are they? How are they used? How many do you have? And how do you get more of them? And what happens if you don't use them all? We've got a fun announcement to share with you guys at the close of this as well. So if you came here with questions today, if you're struggling with something, whether it's related to this topic or not, definitely go add those to the Q and A. We are here to work with you live if you need that support. So go ahead and add those questions now. So what marketing credits are, are communication currency. This is a thing that we use inside of our platform. You'll have a certain amount depending on the plan that you have. And we use them to email and to text. So how we use them first for email? This is when we send a one-to-one email message from our contact manager. So if you click that person's email and you compose a single email that you send to one other person, maybe that's welcoming a new member, maybe that's just sending a reminder, whatever that might be. A broadcast email falls into this category as well. So this would be instead of one-to-one, this would be one-to-many. So if you were to say, send a monthly newsletter out to 500 people, you would have a broadcast email where you send that one email out to 500 people one time. Another way that you would be using marketing credits with email is with campaigns. These are drip campaigns. Drip meaning you're getting a steady drop of emails that are sent out to someone over a period of time. So this would be something like an email-based class or an informational campaign for leads, or maybe even a new member campaign that introduces someone to the starter kit as it is on its way to them. Now with text, how email market, or sorry, how marketing credits are used for text is really the same. They just work out to be a different calculation. So when you send a text message from your contact manager directly out to another person, we'll show you exactly what this looks like inside of your contact manager so that you're clear on what this is. A one-to-one text message from your contact manager from you to one other person, that is an email market, or sorry, email marketing, keep saying that. This is how, one, one way a marketing credit is used for text. Another is to send a broadcast text. So similarly, if you wanted to send out a beautiful pic from a Get Oil-ing content provider that maybe talks about the monthly PV promo and you want to send that out to 500 people on, who are your members, that would be a one-to-many example. And then finally, we have drip campaigns for text as well. So this would be a text class, for example. Okay, so these are the way that we use marketing credits. Email and text, one-to-one, one-to-many, one-time, and one-to-many over time in campaigns. Alright, now there's one important thing we need to note here. We do have something called two-way texting with our chat feature that does not use marketing credits. This is actually a free thing, or rather, an included thing. Free is probably not the right way to describe this. An included thing, when you have the two-way texting set up with Get Oil-ing, it allows you to have your own phone number so that you can email and, or so that you can call and text. And when you're using the chat feature inside of Get Oil-ing, you can actually chat back and forth, just like you would with, say, Facebook Messenger, except you are chatting back and forth to their telephone. And that does not use marketing credits. So this is what this looks like. You see that chat up there at the top? That is the, the, the feature that uses no credits, where you can actually just chat back and forth with someone, one-on-one. When you text from down here on the bottom left, you'll be using credits. That's sending a single text out to one person. You can also chat from there without using credits. You can also call directly from here if you have your own number through Get Oil-ing. And then of course, you've got over here on the right, if you hit that email button, that's going to use credits. And if you use that little text bubble there, that's gonna use credits as well. So what's a marketing credit worth? What does this actually equate to? So for email, it's one credit per email sent. So if you send one email to one person, that's one credit. If you send one email to 100 people one time, that's 100 credits. If you have a campaign with five emails and 500 people opt, or let's just say five people opt into that campaign, we'll just keep the numbers, keep the math small here. And that would be one email per each person for every message in that campaign. Alright, so what's a text marketing credit worth? For a, for a text message, SMS, this is text only, it's 15 credits. Okay, and that's up to 160 characters. This is the cutoff in most cases, no matter who your provider is for texting. Obviously, if you are iPhone to iPhone, that changes. But a standard, and that's not an SMS by the way, an SMS is 15 credits, 160 characters, text only, it is 15 credits. So if you send one text to one person with 160 characters or less, it's going to cost you 15 marketing credits. Okay? If you send one text, a broadcast, to 100 people, it's going to cost 1,500 credits. Again, this is just text, only text, no emoji or images included. Okay, so MMS, this is a multimedia message. The, the MMS is 40 credits. So this is something that you can use if you're going to send an MMS. This is a combination of text and image. And the cool thing about how our marketing credits work is that in a single message that you send, it's 40 credits, whether you send one image with your message or 10 images with your message. Okay, so you can actually get a lot, like a big bang for your buck there, out of using image-based messages, MMS. It's 40 credits for one message, one-to-one, 40 credits. If you send that same MMS to 100 people with up to 10 images attached, that's 4,000 marketing credits.
Can I pop in here quick with a little extra clarification there? So this is pricing for US and Canada recipients. Because we support over 200 countries, every country other than the US and Canada has a different pricing. Well, credit usage, I should say. But, so the numbers will vary. If you're out, if you're texting somebody outside the US and Canada and you wanna know, send one text and there's a way you can go, Ashley's gonna be showing a slide later, but where you find how many credits you have, you go in there and see how many it takes essentially to send that credit. So it does vary, these are US and Canada pricing.
And if you have any specific questions about your market, feel free to reach out to us directly. Just in the interest of being able to respect everyone's time here. We do support texting in over 200 countries. So where those things may differ outside of the US and Canada that we're showing here, definitely reach out to us with those specific questions. Alright, so if your text, again, this is text only, is under 161 characters, or sorry, if it's over, sorry, that's the allocator's going that way. If your text is greater than 161 characters, it will automatically split itself into segments. And that will be segments of 153 apiece. So this would be equal to two texts or 30 credits. Again, text only, no images or emoji taken into account here. Emoji does a layer, a little, does add a little bit of a complication layer to this. And we can kind of get into what that means here in just a bit. But, but again, if you send something that's over 161 characters and you send that to one person, right? That's going to be 30 credits instead of 15. Obviously, if you send that to multiple people, we do the math, that, that's gonna be the increase there.
I did, so it actually should probably be greater than or equal to, I just noticed that today.
Oh yeah?
There's a little calculator inside the system that we'll be showing too. But yeah.
And this actually shows up for you when you are composing the message, right? So you'll actually see the text show up inside your Get Oil-ing account, indicating whether or not the message is gonna wind up being split.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, so guys, understand, you don't have to like count every, every letter of every word that you want to send to someone. Our system will actually do that and inform you whether or not it's going to be divided up before you send. Alright, and you can send, like I mentioned before, up to 10 images in a single text for 40 credits. That MMS distinction, 40 credits for a text message with up to 10 images. Now, let's talk about how many credits are at each plan level. If you don't yet have a Get Oil-ing account or you wanna see what the differences are, if you go over to GetOil-ing.com and you hit the sign up button, you'll see the different plans that we have. When you go to click for more down at the bottom of our plan descriptions, it'll open up a little pop-up here that you see on the right, and it'll tell you how many marketing credits come standard with that membership level. Right, so what we're looking at here as an example is premium, probably our most popular level. And that comes with 12,000 marketing credits per month. Now, if you wanna see right now how many marketing credits you currently have, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom of your dashboard to my account settings and you select my plan, you're going to see up there at the top your credit usage. You can see how many credits come with your plan. If you have anything rolled over, how many you've used, and of course, what's available and what's coming up, as well as your usage history. So if you wanna see what you've done and how that's added up, you can look at that. And then right below on that same page, you can see where you can purchase either on a one-time or an ongoing basis, additional email and text credits. So if you are just, you know, just getting started and you know that you want to send a higher volume of emails or a higher, well, likely text in this case, if you wanna amp up your ability to communicate with folks and you're not quite ready necessarily to, to move up a level in your, in your Get Oil-ing membership, then you can actually add on credits, either one-time or ongoing. And all of those prices are listed there. And you'll be able to see that under your account settings and your plan. Now, what if you don't use them all, right? What if you, you know, don't do a whole lot of texting this month, but you will next month? What happens? Well, this is not something that we had before. This is new now, as of this week. Your marketing credits can now roll over from up to two months prior. So if your plan has 12,000 credits per month and you have not texted for the last two months, or maybe you've just been setting your system up and now you're kind of getting around to using this, you're going to have those 24,000 credits, if that is your plan level, available for your use this month. It is a two-month prior rollover. Super exciting, right? Alright, so here's how you get started with your marketing credit. So first, get your own business phone number with Get Oil-ing. So if you click the chat icon when you're logged into Get Oil-ing up at the top right of your back office, you will find your instructions to get that done. You can then make and take calls from that number. That's actually your business phone number. You can click from inside your Get Oil-ing account to even initiate a call that would come through your phone. And then of course, you would have that unlimited two-way texting from the chat icon that I showed you guys earlier, we'll show you again here in a, in a demo as well. You have unlimited two-way texting, so you can actually just kind of go back and forth with folks from there at no additional cost. It costs no additional credits for you to send a quick text to someone from the chat feature. And you can also get text replies and respond to your broadcasts and campaigns. So this is a big difference, guys. If you have a Get Oil-ing account, but you don't have the phone number set up, then when you send out a text, which you are capable of doing and it does use marketing credits in the same way, they will be instructed in whatever text that you send them to respond to a different number, as opposed to responding directly to what you just sent them. So you're actually able to keep that thread of communication going, to have that automation happening in your business and having that right there on your phone. Pretty exciting stuff. So you'll be able to get replies and respond to your broadcasting campaigns. And then you'll also, and this is really exciting, and this is an ever-growing thing that we've got for you guys. You get to use Get Oil-ing partners to power your text marketing. Every single Get Oil-ing provider that we have right now, content provider, our partners, have text campaigns that reach and teach and engage your members and your leads and allow you to have the peace of mind of not having to worry about being a marketing or product genius to pull that off. So it's a great combination, it's a powerful thing. There's a lot of you guys here today that use this and see a lot of great benefit from it. And so that's how you get started. And of course, if you don't have Get Oil-ing, we are a dollar for your first month. If you go over to GetOil-ing.com, starting at our basic plan and up, you can find all that information about your marketing credits and really just kind of get started, right? Get going. I wanna cover a couple of frequently asked questions before we move into questions. And help for you guys first, how much is the two-way texting add-on? Sometimes we do have promotions that will include a year of texting, but in most cases, it's gonna be nine US dollars per month. Alright, now is your texting or phone number a USA-only option? Nope, as I mentioned earlier, we are in over 200 countries. And if you have a Project Broadcast phone number, if you want to bring that to Get Oil-ing, we get this question a lot. If you want to consolidate your business tools and have everything under one roof, you absolutely can port numbers from elsewhere. Obviously, that's something we have to work with you one-on-one to accomplish. So send an email to us, support@getoil-ing.com, and we can help you initiate that process. And then also, do you have an app? This is a question we get frequently. And the, the short answer is yes, we are an app. We are fully mobile responsive, fully mobile friendly. You can use us from any device. And any feature that you create for your own Get Oil-ing site is going to automatically be mobile responsive, mobile-ready. So we are an app. Most apps that you find, say, in the App Store, App Store, or actually browser-based, meaning they were built to be basically websites that could fit nicely inside of smaller boxes. We are that, we just don't put ourselves in a box. So we are an app and we can help you move your number if you're looking to do that. Alright, so now let's get into Q and A. Excited to help you guys out and show you guys if you're confused about any of this. And for those of you who are watching this for the first time, if you didn't get the email about this live today and you're watching this as a recording, if you wanna be on these live calls, go to GetOil-ing.com/weeklyworksession and we will help you out just as we're helping these folks out here today. So let me get out of this share here. And yeah, let's get into some, some questions. Alright. So Sue is asking, will emails, et cetera, work for UK promos? Yes, absolutely. This, our email feature, it, it works most easily. It's like, obviously with text, it's going to have some variances in terms of cost of marketing credits in different markets. But email is just email. And this is gonna work the same for you, no matter where you are in the world.
Michelle Bowman asks, off-subject, I know how to download my downline each month, but somehow there is a list somewhere of more people. I currently have 654 members. I ended up, excuse me, I end up with over 1,000 people each month. I want to make sure I am not sending the same email two times to the same people.
Now, that's something, just say, email us. We can look at your list and see if you've got duplicates in there, kind of give you an analysis and go from there.
Yeah, that may very well be it. If you're not generating leads from elsewhere and other people aren't opting in, then, then you probably do have some duplicates. Alright, will you touch on how we can, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Will you touch on how we can transfer our existing phone number from Project Broadcast to Get Oil-ing? That will be something that you email us to our support@getoil-ing.com and we will help you with that. So essentially, the process is, is that you do have to have a text set up on your membership. So you will do that first, then email us. And what we need to do is, is send you paperwork to show us a form to fill out and then also verification of ownership of that phone number. So we would need like a copy of something that shows like your phone number and your name on it and then as well as maybe like a, essentially like a bill, like you would, showing that with proof of, of where you live for your driver's license or whatever. You know what I mean? Just something showing the ownership part of that. You will email that back to us and then we will be able to go ahead and submit that. You can let us know prior to, just to see if it's available to, if your phone number is available to be transferred, because it does have to be a US phone number in order to transfer to, to us. And then it takes about two weeks. You will have to keep your Project Broadcast phone number or account active until the transfer is complete.
Awesome, you guys are asking some great questions in the chat. Please make sure that they come over here to the Q and A so that we're able to make sure we get to all of them, because there's a lot going on over there and it's really easy to miss you in the chat.
Yes, Terry says, landing page is done, lead magnet is done, campaign is done. I'm struggling with how to get it out there. How can I post in, on social media and get people to it? Is there a way to post a shorter link to it does, it doesn't look like a webpage funnel?
So there's a couple of options there. Number one is, if you're gonna be posting a link straight to Facebook, if you copy the link first before you start typing, and I think this actually happens as well after you've typed and you continue to type another line after that, it will populate the preview and you can remove the text of the link from the post. That's one option. And so it only shows the preview for the post and then you could write whatever you need to write and then they can still click the link that then is populated by Facebook. And you won't see the longer link there. Another option is, if you have your own domain, you can go into domain management and you can actually create, and this would be on like your GoDaddy or you, and you, if you're going through us, definitely reach out. You can, you know, basically go in and create a yourname.com/whatever you wanna call it, right? Free guide or something like that. That would be the other option there.
Michelle, Greg, this might be one for you. Michelle, I recorded a Zoom 101 class with people on my laptop. I can't open the Zoom call. It says something about code C, codec?
Yeah, so there's been, I don't know, Zoom made an update lately. And there are some people who, for whom the recorded file isn't converting or something like that. The only way that you can get that file right now is you have to like put it on, upload. There's a file called .zoom, I think, in your folder somewhere, in the Zoom folder. You have to put that on Dropbox and then email a link to Zoom Support. It's support@zoom.us and then they can convert it for you. I put in a request to have them bring back that feature. You used to be able to just double-click on the file. For some reason, they've eliminated that and so now I have to email them. It doesn't happen for everybody. It's just, I guess, once in a while it'll, there'll be some problem. But that's the resolution, is you do have to contact their support right now.
Alright, so there's quite a few about, about texting to Europe.
Yes, can we text to Europe? Yes, I believe that we should be able to do that. It will just, depending upon where you're at, it will cost or take more credits to send to other countries as well. So, and we can show you how that counter works as well. Ashley, do you want me to go ahead and do that right away?
Yeah, sure.
The counter.
Yeah, and was another question related to that while we're waiting here. Can you have a US number and a Europe number and an India number? Right now, you have to have only one per Get Oil-ing account.
Okay, so to, if we're gonna say, we're gonna do a text here, I'm gonna just click on Contacts Manage. And then you can either filter and bulk message people or you can just find one. I'm just gonna do the one here right away. And so like we were showing, you can text, chat, or call directly from here. So I'm gonna click on text or you can also go directly into the contact and the same things will be showing up here. So if I click on text and then once I start typing here, it will pull up a counter right here and it's gonna tell you exactly how many credits it's going to take to send this message. So, and if you watch here, it will go up. This is my favorite oil. Favorite oil that I mentioned.
While she's typing that, another Europe question. So as far as like acquiring, there's, there's a difference between acquiring a phone number to be able to text from, as well as texting to. So we can text to over 200 countries. There's this much smaller list of countries for which we can acquire a phone number. And then some of those do require residency, proof of residency. So if you have a question about, if you want your Get Oil-ing number to be a non-US or Canada number, we can do it, very one-on-one, requires, you know, passports, all these other documentation in those countries. But there are a handful that don't have residency requirements. I think like Belgium is one of those, possibly the UK. There's, anyway, there's a small handful that don't have that. But I know Australia does, there's some other places, I think Germany does require that, so.
Okay, so I have this here, now I'm going, and it shows that it'll take 15 credits. If I add an image now, it will now jump up to 40 credits. So any message that you send, you will know before you send it how many credits it will take per, per text that you are sending. Now, if this is a, like a bulk text as well, you can add in little fields as well. So if I put this in here, contact first name, go where I wanted it to, then it will address it to each person as it sends. So then you can send now or you can also schedule it to be at a, a specific time. Also, you can do this with save replies. So if I delete that out, and I don't know what, Greg, is there a good one to use?
I don't know, I'll hand it that account there.
Okay.
Are you looking for a longer message?
Yeah, or?
Any of those. You just copy and paste something if you wanted to.
Okay, anyway, so if you have saved replies in your account that you've done, you can certainly put those in here as well. Okay, what else do we have? What plan does the phone number start with? What plan does it? You can add, or you can add a phone number with any of our plans, correct, Greg?
Yeah, the, the nine-dollar-a-month two-way texting add-on is with any plan. I mean, every plan varies on marketing credits, but yeah, you can add on a phone number.
Okay, Mary, our transfer is gonna be any phone number that you have and can prove ownership of, right? So even if you have a voice number from another service, a Google Voice number or something like that?
Yes, I believe so. I mean, we can verify that a number can be transferred. So just email us, we send a message to our provider. They let us know within a day or two whether the number can be transferred and then we can let you know.
I'm, I'm seeing a couple of questions come through as well. When I clarify that we are an app, that doesn't mean we're in the App Store. You go to GetOil-ing.com and we are an app, we are a web-based application. You go to GetOiling.com and we are an app. We are a web-based application, software. And if you wanted to create a shortcut on your home screen of your device to be able to say access your dashboard, we actually have instructions for that. Just click the little question mark at the bottom of your back office to learn how to do that.
Okay, Mary asks 153 characters seems low. I use the engagement source and almost every text is longer than 153. Is there a reason it's so low?
So just some clarification on that. That's if you're not including a picture. So like, once you go over, I think it's about 306 characters, give or take. There is, you're better off adding a picture. So if you add a picture, then it goes up to 1600 characters with no, no additional charge. So if you add a picture, you can have one picture or 10 pictures or one character or 1600 characters on your text, all those ranges for that same 40 credits, assuming you're sending it to the US and Canada. Even emojis, that's I guess one other thing we, I wanted to touch on too. If you're not including a picture, then this goes into the segmenting thing, which gets a little more complicated. But if you include an emoji without a picture, then it's like that cuts that in half yet in terms of what is that like 60 some or 70 some credits there if I'm doing the math right. And so that's just a note. But if you have a picture, that kind of makes it, hey, you get 1600 characters. They can all be emojis and you can have 10 pictures. So there's a lot of flexibility when you include the picture. And I think most of the, you know, that specific content provider has pictures included. So that would, you know, in the 153 character limit, whatever, doesn't really apply.
All right, Kathy asked, and this is more about campaigns. She says that people are getting automated emails that I didn't send out. I set up a campaign but not using it yet. So if you, and you mentioned a name that's in your contacts, if you go to that contact, you can actually scroll down and see what campaigns they're being sent. What you'll find out is that if you have opted to put a landing page on the front of your GetOiling site when you get started with us, there is a new prospects campaign that automatically will send to people who opt in for that. You can change those settings so that there is a new campaign that you create, another campaign that you get from one of our content partners, or you can choose to have no campaign at all. So you can actually go and change that. Now, there's, there's some other questions in here about like, you know, I accidentally sent something and people are still clicking links. We can't unsend emails that have been sent or texts that have been sent. That would be amazing if that was possible, but the lords of the internet have not figured out how to do that yet after all these years. So that's probably what's happening. However, what you do want to make sure, if you are seeing someone is clicking a link in a campaign that you didn't want to be sending, go to their contact card in your contact manager, scroll down, see what campaigns they're on and remove those campaigns. And of course, if you can see what campaign that is, you can actually go to your campaigns list and click, there's a number that's next to that that will indicate who that campaign has been applied to so that you can identify those people and remove them from that campaign as well.
Okay, can you explain more about the benefits of having a phone number from GetOiling and how to use it?
Yeah, so if you want to automate your texting, right, your text marketing, if you want to, just in the same way that you would automate your emails, where let's just say you do a weekly Zoom call with your team. If you want to set up an email or a text rather, in this case text, to go out to remind people 20 minutes before the call every week who are, you know, on your team, then you can have this set up to do that for you. There's a number of other ways that you use this. Most folks who use our two-way texting feature or who use text marketing with us use a third-party service provider like YL Customer Delight, like Grow Workspace, like Modern Companion. And, and they actually have pre-written campaigns that you use via text to reach out and touch and get people to engage. And then of course, to educate as well and, you know, text classes, that kind of thing. So the benefit here is that there's no way, if you just use your phone number that you have right now, there's no way to automate your ability to reach people in that way. Everything is just gonna be you doing it one person at a time or, you know, group texts are annoying, guys. Maybe we don't want to do that. So it allows you to buy your time back. And it's also, you know, in terms of having that additional phone number, maybe you don't want to put your personal phone number out there. If you're generating leads online and you don't want your actual cell phone number out there for the public, having a business phone number is super valuable. So that's just a couple of benefits there. There's obviously a lot more. It makes a lot of sense if you want to be more effective in reaching people, sending out reminders, educating at scale. And then of course, having that bit of privacy as well or under personal information.
Yeah, and so the one thing too about this is, is that, you know, it will show up at the bottom of your website. You can do that. And so then as long as you have your phone number inserted into into it as well, what will happen is, is that if some, when somebody calls your, your business phone number, then they, it will forward to your personal cell phone. So it's not the getting a separate cell phone. It is just gonna be forwarding it to your main cell phone as well. And it just works out really slick. And the same thing as well with that call feature in each under your, in your contact manager that we were pointing out, when you hit that call button, what the system is gonna do is it's gonna call your cell phone first and then it's gonna call the person that you are trying to call. So it will link the two of you up really easily and quickly. Okay, Jean asks, can you review again the details about getting, oh, that's one we already did, sorry. I accidentally sent out a campaign to all of my contacts, which used most of my credits. I went back in and canceled the campaign or thought I did, but people are still clicking the links two weeks later. Can you summarize how to correct errors like that, should they occur, and to make sure all contacts are including, aren't including if they, if that isn't the intent?
So this is kind of what I just spoke to about, you know, if you've already sent it and they're clicking links, there's really not anything we can do about it. We just live and learn. But then if you want to make sure that if there is a specific campaign you do not want being sent out, go to the campaign in your campaigns list, look for the number off to the right-hand side of it. Click that number and it will show you everyone that that campaign is applied to. You can select all of them and you can choose to remove that campaign from right there if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, so what she is talking about here is okay, so if I go to, I click on contact settings, click on campaigns. And then there will be a number beside the campaign that has people on it. So if you click on one of these and then you can also scroll down on that contact and see where, which campaign that they are on. And then if you click on one, it will bring it up and you could even delete it off of that contact as well. So if you accidentally send one out, you can delete it individually. Or you can also, if I go back to the contacts, I could select all of them. And then you can click on add campaign, follow-up plan, vault, and tags. And you could say I want to remove whichever campaign that you want to remove. And you would pick the campaign in that, in the dropdown that you want to remove in bulk from people.
Awesome. So I think Nancy, I think what you were talking about here, how the counter works, I think this is sending a text message. So maybe if we could just show real quick again, like when you choose to send a text message to someone, how that counter works. So it shows you how many characters are there?
So I'm gonna pull up Greg here again. Okay, so click on the text here or there's also the text up here. And then you will just type into this box here. And as you are typing, it will change the amount of, it will tell you how many characters you have and how many credits that you are using. So if I add an image again, I'm gonna use this one now because it's kind of, you know, teamy. And welcome to my team, then it, it goes up to 40 credits instead because now we are doing a text and adding the image. Hopefully that answers your question there. Cornelia, I sometimes have to change the phone number in contacts from Germany or Pamina because I need the country code as well. How do I avoid overwriting?
So that's during the import process, there's a, I guess, I don't know if you have, probably don't have a file handy. But there is a checkbox that allows you to just not import that phone number. And I could probably, maybe that would be something, I know I've got a, I've got a contact here or a file ready to go that I'd be able to test out. If you want me to do that, I'll, I will pull that up here in a second. And let me share my screen out here quick. This one, okay. So when you're importing, this is, there's some relatively new changes in the importer. So under contact settings over here, click on import and choose your file, of course. And I know I've got one demo file here. Gotta find the right folder. So I've got my little demo file here and down on the bottom really is what we're looking for. So like the down here. So if you don't want to import the phone number, so there's this checkbox relatively new for existing contacts, only update selected fields. So you check that box and then you can say, well, what fields do you want to be updated? And you could uncheck mobile phone, for example, if you didn't want to overwrite that. And then hit start import and it'll leave, for existing contacts, it'll leave all their mobile numbers alone. If you have a new person come in, it'll add them, it'll add their mobile number in there, but for existing contacts, it will not update it.
Okay, Christie, if I do a mass text out to my team and then respond to one of those and on the chat feature, will all, will all both of those conversations appear on one text stream?
Yes, that does appear in the chat area as well as, you know, when you're looking at your contact, there's the past actions, which will have like kind of everything put there. So like if I click on my name and come down to past actions, these are a bunch of emails. But they would show up here as well as if you click the chat link, that's gonna show both campaigns, broadcast message, well, campaigns, broadcast messages and individual chats. Those will show up there.
Okay, I've wondered how to use saved replies.
I think we have a whole training on that somewhere, don't we, to go into depth on that? But generally, they're sort of like email templates. Set them up under contact settings and save replies. And then when you're sending a text or an email, click on the little save replies and it'll pre-fill it into your newsletter or right into your message body. So, yeah. Those are, that's kind of the short version. It's just like a template that you can have on hand for easy reuse. And we did a training on that.
Yeah, and also this is something that you would be able to get from a lot of our content partners as well. So if you wanted to have, we have templates for you to make newsletters. These are also great for like canned responses, things that you would typically say over and over again to a lot of different people. But then you could also get monthly newsletters that you use this way as well. Dirk mentioned having created a Zoom, a live Zoom event for people to register on or register for and you want to send out an individualized link when they register. If you are using our events feature, and we do have several in-depth trainings on this, one more recently about taking your 101 class online. The instructions, the workflow will be exactly the same. It would just, you know, instead of being your 101 class, it would be something different unless of course, that's what you're doing. If you use our events feature, you can attach a campaign to that event so that when they RSVP, they have those automated responses.
Okay, Melissa, my computer kicked me out and I had to log back in. Don't know if my question was answered. What is the difference between text and chat? So the text feature is what will use credits. And so anything labeled text like, okay, let's see.
Oh yeah, right here. I'm sharing. I just missed that. So yeah. So if you used anything on this screen on the contact manager, it's going to use credits. So like here, or if you say actions and text all. But if you're in the chat, if you pop up the chat, click on chat, this does not use credits. So that's the main difference there.
And chat is more like if you are doing, using it like if you would do your Facebook Messenger kind of a thing. And also within chat, you cannot send any pictures or anything. So it is just chatting back and forth.
Yeah, the difference there is, guys, if you're using the broadcast feature for one-to-one or one-to-many to send out a message through what the image that we showed you guys earlier. So if you want a contact card and you hit text, right, or their number, that's going to use a credit. If you use a campaign, that's going to use credits. The only thing that you can do on our platform that does not use credits is through that chat bubble up there at the top. Now, there have been a couple of questions come through. I've been typing answers to some of these, but just to cover this while we're here, you can actually see in the chat thread, which of course, if you were to hit reply and start talking to Greg right now, Amanda, this would not use any marketing credits at all, but you can see the campaign messages that Greg has received. So you actually have the history of the messages that have been received from your GetOiling number, the campaigns, the things that they've responded to, if they've responded. But you could also just go down there and say, hey, Greg, how are you doing? And that's not going to use any marketing credits at all. But that's again, only through this chat button up at the top. And this is also where you go, you guys. If you, if you missed that part of the call earlier, that chat button, if you don't have two-way texting set up with GetOiling is exactly where you go to get your account set up. We had a question about porting a project broadcast phone number. If you are porting your number over to us, you would not still be using Project Broadcast. So, you know, whatever credits you've got there, those stay there if you're moving over to us.
Yeah, and during the, I guess, during the transfer process, you do, your project broadcast system still works. There's like a window of two to five hours, whatever, on the transfer day where your phone number doesn't work and then it's switched. But you can use it up, you know. It's essentially like you initiate the transfer, you've got somewhere between one and two weeks. We'll get you a date and then you'd switch over to us.
Also, back to that texting too. I know that Greg had posted in the comment thread of how to put it actually on your phone. So the one thing about the texting feature is, is that there is a link. And I don't know, Greg, if you have that available again right away, but it puts a little shortcut onto your phone so that way you can quickly add it to your cell phone so you can access it more quickly. So when somebody does reply back to you via the chat feature or via text, what it will do is, is it will go into the chat feature and then it will show the little number one beside the chat at the top of the website as well as it will send you a email on, in the email that you have set up with us, letting you know that somebody has replied to you and then also give you a link to reply back to them. Or you can access that either on your phone or going to your computer and hitting on that chat button again.
And related to that, so somebody else down here was that, was wondering, how do you set up your number so that it comes to your, how do you set up your two-way texting number so that incoming text notifications come to your phone? The easiest way is clicking your name here in the upper right-hand corner and then verify that this is your actual mobile phone number, not the one that, you know, not your two-way texting number. Otherwise, your two-way texting number is gonna try to notify itself and that doesn't work very well. So you want your actual mobile phone number here, your physical phone that you've got. And then you'll get your alerts on your phone as well as that's the number to which calls are routed. So if you make an incoming call or you push that call button, that's inside the contact manager, this is the number that's used. Somebody had also asked on here about a landline. Yes, you can have the call forward to your landline, but your incoming text notifications are not gonna work. So what you could do in that case, under your my account settings and under two-way texting, you can actually turn off notify me by text when someone sends me a message. And then you would only get your calls in there and then you'd have to rely on your email notifications of incoming text messages. So I know there's some people who live in super rural locations and that's a good option for you if you only have a landline.
So team, we
So team, we have a question that's kind of embedded into the chat feature that is related. There is a question about when you have your two-way texting number, can you also use that, that phone number to call people? And if you can use that phone number to call people, does it use credits?
It does not use um, credits. But yes, you can. So um, like we had mentioned earlier, if you, if you hit that call button, what it's going to do is, is it's going to call your cell phone. And then it will then in turn call the person that you are calling. So yes, you can definitely call with that, um, with that business phone number, uh, the two-way texting phone number. Um, and then, so like Greg was showing earlier, the only thing that you need to do is, is that once you get that phone number. You will go back to your, um, click on the name. And then under website phone number right there is where you're going to put your two texting, two-way texting phone number. And then making sure that the mobile number, which is your cell phone or the number that you want us to forward, um, the phone, incoming phone calls to. Would be right there, whether that be a cell phone or whether that be a uh, landline. And just like Greg had mentioned earlier, the landline um, does have some, it, it, it won't allow as many things to do as, as your cell phone would. Can you clarify your emoji comment? It counts, does it count as a picture?
Uh, it's different than a picture. So I'll just show you this with the text counter here quick. And here is a neat little, if you're on your computer, this is a neat little hack I learned recently. If you, so I'm on a Mac right now, this, there's a different keystroke for Windows. But if I push Ctrl, Command, Space, I get a neat little emoji pop up on the computer, which is super awesome. I think on Windows, it's the Windows key comma, if I remember right, Windows comma. It'll pop up a similar panel. And anyway, so as I'm typing here, you can see that this goes up. And I'll just repeat this a little bit. Copy and paste, you can see 135 characters and maybe you can, let me zoom in a little bit. 135 characters, 15 credits. Now, um, if I go ahead and add an emoji. You can see now that it's going to use three messages because emojis reduce whatever. But now it's going to, it's going to recommend here like, consider sending a picture with your message. So then once you go ahead and add a picture, then that drops it down to the four, the max of the 40 credits um, per message. So if you're sending more than like 60 characters or something with an emoji, just toss a picture in there too. It's just, you know, probably will save some credits. It'll tell you here if you need to. But it's not the same as sending a picture, that's different.
And Kim did just say that it is the Windows period is what brings up um, the emojis for the Windows. Greg and I have Macs. So things are a little bit different, so.
We've had a few people ask about where the, uh, where they can find out about our content providers, guys. It's on our GetOiling homepage, GetOiling.com. Just scroll down and you'll see all of them there. It is a growing list.
Okay, Rebecca says, uh, beginner question. I have Grow Workspace newsletter and want to send to all my members. What did the, what did the best way to do that and does that cost credits? Yes, so within Grow Workspace, you will um, have a, a link that will transfer it into your GetOiling platform. Um, and then from there, however that you use it, essentially, you know, um, you can do it via text. You can um, set up a campaign with it if it's, you know, and most of the time, this, the, the information that comes from our, from like Grow Workspace or from any of our other content providers, um, they will already have it either labeled as a campaign or as a um, saved reply, or you know what I mean? Like they will specify to you how to use that. So you can um, you can even use their guidance to tell you how you would need to use that. And yes, it does uh, cost, or it does use credits depending upon how you're doing this. Whether it be um, an email that was uh, the, the main way to, to uh, send it out. Uh, so if it's an email, then of course it's going to be one kit credit per email. And then if it is a text message, then um, depending upon images and stuff like that would then tell you um, how many credits it will take.
Since we're still talking, oh, sorry. Since we're still talking about credits a little bit, um, Greg or Amanda, whoever's screen sharing, could you demo real quick and show everybody where they can actually go in their account to check their credit usage and how much, um, how many credits they've used and where they've used them, how many they still have left?
Yeah, I can show you that here, very quick too. Uh, great question. One quick thing before we do that. So typically, you know, like Grow Workspace and these other providers have campaigns. So if you want to send that out to your team, filter or select people that you want to send it to, click actions and then this add campaign. Choose the campaign that you got from your provider, hit apply and it'll send it out automatically. So Kim, under your, under your bit there, if you want to see your credit usage, you go into my account settings, click on the bottom. Click my plan. And it'll come up and it'll show you a little, like a little box here. The current month is the only one that shows rollover credits because it just kind of goes back. If you want to see your usage history, click a link here and it's going to come up and show you your credits over the last however long that you've been a customer since the beginning. It kind of shows the breakdown of what's going on, what's available. So, but yeah, your rollover credits do apply, it takes the last two months and adds those, adds those up and then adds that into your current month's credit. And then this is where you go to see or to buy more right here.
Okay, Mary asks, if I use GetOiling phone number for campaigns, may I specify what name I want to show for that number? And if I decide to leave GetOiling, may I keep that number?
Caller ID right now is not customizable. Um, that's something that I've heard potentially the, the telecom providers are going to be allowing to happen in the next couple of years. I don't know that for sure, but right now they're not customizable in terms of caller ID. And as far as like transferring, yeah, the number uh, can be transferred, just like you can transfer it in, you can transfer it anywhere later. You know, assuming that your other provider can of course, transfer it, there is that slight risk. For some reason, some providers can't transfer some numbers and um, that all would depend on where you would transfer it to. And then you also said here, Mary, my VoIP number handles all the forwarding, et cetera. I want that to ring because I can tell where I want it to ring, et cetera. I'm not a hundred percent sure it's offhand, um, you know, maybe email us if you have questions on that. Typically, the number can only be connected to one provider at a time. So it doesn't, you know, the current services on your phone wouldn't continue to exist if you connected it or transferred it over to GetOiling. But you might be able to use it for the number that you have under your mobile phone number here, um, as a number two for people to call into. So there's probably some way of making it work out, but I don't know your situation enough to um, make a recommendation there.
Okay, Mary asks, how do you set, how do you set it up? So your GetOiling number comes to your personal phone number and we just kind of went through that. Uh, making sure that that personal cell phone or that personal number is underneath that mobile number there. Uh, Michelle, how do we know the call is coming from a business number on our phone? Will it show who's calling? So Greg, does that show how, you know what I mean, like that it's coming from?
It shows the caller ID of whoever is calling. So um, yeah, it doesn't show that it's like a business phone call. You know, I think the, yeah, that's really the option right now is it does, or it's the, what it does now, it shows who's calling.
Okay, I have sent out campaigns that are showing in my message as sent. But I have confirmed that they have received. How do I find them more efficiently?
When I would just say, probably email us, we'd have to look into your account and see the specifics of what happens. Sometimes there's, I don't know, delivery issues or occasional misreporting of um, delivery stats on certain, you know, especially when it comes to texting.
Just rereading that question, they said that they're sending out campaigns that are not showing sent in their messages. Do campaign messages show up in sent messages or are those only um, broadcast messages or emails that are sent out?
I see, yeah, this, if you're talking about this button here, this, or this link messages, those don't show campaign messages. They used to several months ago, but um, that got confusing for some, for people because there was only some that were and weren't. So campaign messages don't show here right now. You can confirm that they are sent by going to a specific contact and then pulling up uh, the past actions over here. You can see that the messages will be there as well as coming down here and seeing what campaign that they are on and what day that they've been sent. And one, one other common thing, if your campaign isn't working, click on contact settings over here and go to general settings. And then scroll down to the bottom and make sure that this is set to yes. Cause there's like a master switch for people who don't want the email marketing and we see this occasionally is set to no. And then it like shuts off all your campaigns. So just a little pro tip there.
And also you can see, um, Greg, if you want to go back to um, the, the your contact in there and look at past actions, you can click on one of those messages. And it will tell you if it was delivered or not. And then it will also um, on there, if you look at that open envelope there as well. It will tell you if they opened the email or, um, and stuff like that. So that is also another way of knowing for sure if that person has gotten that message or not. Okay, um, Gwen, side question, is there a way to bulk add to do for a group of people? For example, I mailed out something to all of my personally enrolled on ER yesterday. I want to add that task to everyone and count it as an action for my virtual coach. Is there a way to do that?
You can bulk add to-do items, but you can't add um, past actions. So depending on which one you're wanting to do, so that to bulk add a to-do, you'd first create a follow-up plan under settings and follow-up plans. And in that case, you just probably create a follow-up plan that only has one to-do item in it. And then when you're in your contact manager, you'd filter or select who you want it to be added to. And then go to actions in this ad campaign follow-up plan. Choose your follow-up plan that you just made that only has one to do, to do item in there and hit apply and then it'll bulk add it. And again, that's, it's only going to like add it to the outstanding to-do items. It's not going to actually mark it as done. So you still have to go in each one and hit market as done.
Okay, how do you set up so your GetOiling number with? Um, I noticed my home number showed up on my GetOiling page, but I don't want that number. When I want, when I went to settings, there's no home number even listed.
Website phone, I mean, unless you've created, I mean, so if you haven't created a custom page, then click on your name up here and make sure that this phone number is whatever you want it to be. If you don't want any number listed on your website, you can just like type a dash in there and then save and it'll allow you to skip that. And otherwise, if you have a custom page set up, then you might have to go edit that page under my site settings. And then um, custom pages, find the page, maybe your number is typed directly on there. That would be the other place to go look. Related to that, I see the next question, Melissa says, where are we putting our two-way texting number? So what you want to do here, your two-way texting number, once you have it set up, you want to put that as your website phone because that's going to be publicly visible. That's going to be in your contact me box, that's going to be in the email or the page footer if you've got that turned on. And then you would put your actual mobile number here, that's not actually going to show to anyone. This is just for internal use only. It allows you, this is where incoming text notifications are sent, incoming calls are sent um, as well.
Christine asks, Project Broadcast has a spam filter and trackable link feature. I love. Are there any features like that in GetOiling or plans to add them?
We have a uh, trackable link. Essentially, all the links that you send out of GetOiling are automatically, or through text. Are automatically shortened to be on whatever your domain name is, whatever your website address is, it's going to put it on there. It's going to short, create a short link and track clicks. So if I go back to that contact that I had here, uh, I don't know if I probably didn't click any link in these texts. But you can see, so this is an email, but the same thing would apply to a text message. There will be this little last clicked icon that would show up. And so the, then you can see that there and that would also surface on your dashboard as well. As far as like the spam filtering and all that, I mean, essentially the, the providers do that, you know, like Verizon, Sprint, whatever. In terms of the filtering, there is a help article here. If you go over here and search for, I think it's spam, it'll pop up a little box in our, and this is our help center. I'm opening it a new tab, but that's also down here, this question mark in the corner. Click on that and type in, you know, in this case, I think it comes up if you hit spam, then it'll pop up a little box. Where we've got, if you scroll down a ways, there's some tips for sending text and sort of the common things to look out for.
Okay, Melissa, yes, um, your, for your question on their website number is my GetOiling texting number, yes. Mobile number is your personal cell, yes. Michelle, to clarify, we won't know if it's coming from our personal phone or forwarded from GetOiling number when the call comes in.
Correct.
Camelia, I am not sure what you mean exactly. My member signed up for two of my Zoom classes. She is receiving double of everything. Will this happen every time a person signs up for a class? I have three scheduled for next week.
So Camelia, I, I'd sent a written response to you here. So if you have multiple classes per week and it's the same class. In most cases, uh, people aren't going to sign up for the exact same class to attend multiple times a week. Uh, so you wouldn't want to necessarily change your entire uh, sort of automation structures in your business based on that likelihood. Because it's a pretty slim one. However, if you do host multiple classes per week, um, and they're different, you may want to differentiate the information that's going out in those attached campaigns. Or uh, or, or maybe include fewer emails or something to that effect. If, it, it's not going to be as frequent that one person signs up for the exact same class multiple times. It makes a lot more sense for you to have a campaign attached to a class and to repeat that function with every class that you do online. Um, so that every person, whether they sign up for several classes a week or not, uh, is able to receive that information from you automatically. And then to allow you to have that time back. So um, yeah, this is, this is something that I would not count on being such a consistent phenomenon that you would need to change anything. So that would continue to happen, uh, but I would just recommend if your classes are different. Like if you're hosting multiple classes a week and good for you for doing that, just make sure that there's some differentiation in the campaign that you apply.
Okay, I was under the interpretation that incoming calls to our GetOiling number would appear at that number calling us. Is that not the case? I get many telemarketing calls and want to know which one to answer. It will show the number, so, right Greg? So.
It's the number of the person who's calling, yeah.
Okay, so Gwen asks, does the phone number need to include the dash between the numbers or just straight numbers with no characters?
Really matter actually. And actually that reminds me, um, if you're texting internationally, um, and you're using the contact manager. You do have to include the country code with a plus sign at the beginning. So if you're in, I think the UK is like plus four, four and Australia is like plus six, one or something like that. You do have to include that at the beginning. So when you're editing your contact, let me pull mine up and I'll just show you. Like if you're editing it here, you want to make sure that their mobile number would have like, you know, the plus six, one. If that's, you know, an Australian, I think that's what it is for Australia, but you'd want to make sure that's there. Otherwise they won't get the text. It'll bounce back as an error.
Um, Jean asks, if you get a number from GetOiling, does it automatically forward to your cell phone or do we have to set that up? Yes, it will automatically forward to you. Um, can we block a number that we don't want to receive calls and texts from?
Not currently, that is on our wishlist though.
Michelle says, is there an easy way to remove to-do tasks that you didn't complete in the past and won't be doing?
There is, I mean, if you've got like a significant number of them, we could probably help out, you could email in. If you added them with a follow-up plan, you can bulk remove those. So just like I was showing you before, if you want to bulk add or remove a follow-up plan, you click actions, filter, assort or whatever the people that you want first, click here. And then you could say like, I want to remove a follow-up plan and that would actually go back and, and remove all the to-dos that were generated from those follow-up plans. If you have just manually typed them in, then that wouldn't work and you'd probably have to contact us if you've got more than, you know, 50 or something like that.
Awesome. I think that that is all the questions so far. I don't know if anybody else has anything else that they would like. Or Kim, did you see any more in the chat that we need to address?
There was just two questions early on in chat asking, how do you import contacts? And do we have to download our Young Living downline once every month?
I mean, you can download it as often as you want to, it kind of depends on your team growth. You know, if you're, if you're a bigger team and you're adding 10 people a week or something, maybe you want to, you know, maybe you want to do an import more frequently. If your team's growing at a different rate, just kind of is up to you in terms of that. What was the other part of the question?
How do you, how do you download or how do you import contacts?
How do you import that? Yes, so it's under Contact Settings, and click Import. And then, if you're importing from the Virtual Office, there's some instructions here, follow those, choose your file, check this box, and hit Start, and then it'll walk you through the rest of the process. And it doesn't duplicate contacts when you're coming from the VO.
And that's also a great way to mention that you can use that searchable text, that question mark in the bottom. If you click on that text, or that question mark on the bottom corner of your screen, you can just type in there, import contacts, and you'll get a great help article that'll walk you through all of this stuff, too.
Really importantly, guys, for the majority of questions that you have, this is going to be the best first place for you to go. And, and it actually helps us to help you better, the more you use this feature, because it'll help us identify where we can help fill in the gaps to help you get information even more quickly and directly to what you're looking for. So please, 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 use this little question mark down at the bottom of the screen here. Again, it's going to help us help you quicker, long-term. I know we're super fast in terms of being able to get to you guys and help you out, but it'll be even faster, and you'll feel even more empowered. Camelia, coming back to what we were talking about just a bit ago about your multiple classes, if she's getting the exact same information, the same responses, and you're doing a Thieves class and an Oils class, it's possible that you have applied the same campaign to both classes. And so what you want to do is create a new campaign or duplicate and edit a campaign, and have a different campaign attached to each one of those, so that they're getting different information for different classes. And yes, if you do not change the fact that, and this is what it sounds like right now, if, in case this is wrong, this is what it sounds like, you probably have the same campaign applied to multiple events, and this will continue to happen if you do not change the campaign that's attached to a given event. So if you have a Thieves class, then you need to have a Thieves campaign or a Thieves class campaign attached to that event. If you have an Oils class, you need to have an Oils class campaign attached to that event, if you don't want them to receive duplicate information for different classes.
All right, okay, so the one thing that we wanted to also mention here is, is underneath the question mark in the corner, you can search for tips to improve email and text delivery for people, and that should also help as well. So Greg, I don't know if you want to mention anything.
About the mail delivery?
Talking about, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, there's just some common best practices here for sending mail. If, you know, if this still isn't working for you after, you know, trying some of these, and there's actually some things that the recipient can do, too. Like in certain email programs like Gmail, they have, you know, there's, we actually have some tips for Gmail. If none of that works, and you have, or you want to have an email, a custom email address on a domain you own, there's some extra things we can do to help the mail delivery. So if you're in that situation, or if you're interested in an email, you can certainly reach out to us, and we can help you with that.
Okay, Carrie Ford, so I'm not techie at all, and all this seems overwhelming. How patient will you be with my zillion questions to support? Carrie, we are here for you. Both, you know, all of us are, so yes, please send your questions to us. That's why we're here. And, and you know, why we, we are definitely there to answer your questions and, and as quickly as we possibly can. That's one of the things that a lot of our customers love is, is our support staff. So definitely send in your questions, and we are very patient.
Can I make a quick comment to that, too? So I, hi, I'm Kim, if you haven't met me, and I'm willing to answer a bunch of your email questions in the support inbox. So as, I love it. I absolutely love my job, and I love helping you guys. So I am super patient, and I will do everything I can to answer your questions. At the same time, a huge part of my background is in education, so be patient with me as I try to give you tips or show you where to find things, instead of maybe just doing everything for you. So I want to make sure that you guys are built to succeed, so you can replicate yourself again. So if you come up with, with the same situation a month from now, that maybe you know how to answer your own question. So I will continue to answer your questions the best that I can, but if there's like a support article I can send you, or a video, or some kind of resource, I'll probably throw that in there, too. But if it doesn't make sense, just keep emailing me back, and we'll get it figured out.
We tend to sometimes ask a lot of clarifying questions as well. Awesome. Yvonne asks, what does the, how does the custom email work? What if in a few years I decide to leave GetOiling, do I still have ownership of my custom email name?
The name itself is based in your domain, so whether you get the domain by yourself or through us, you know, if you do get it through us, we transfer your domain to you, and then you can use whatever email provider you want to. So yes, basically, your short answer is yes, you can keep your domain, which is what your email is attached to, email service is separate from domain service, so you'd have to figure out a way to move your messages to a new provider. But yeah, it's all totally possible.
Dirk asks, is there a webinar mode in the Zoom account showing only the host and a shared screen, not all of the participants?
This, the Zoom included with GetOiling here is the meeting feature. There is, if you do have a standalone Zoom account, there is like an extra, I forget the price, it's like $50, $60 a month, webinar feature that is actually what you're on right now, where only certain people can be on the screen, and everyone else is hidden. Now, that being said, if you use the, and I can't show you Zoom because we're on a Zoom, but there is a way to stream to Facebook, which is essentially a webinar, so like a Zoom streaming. They have a support article here that you can look up, that you can like actually live stream to Facebook, and then it actually becomes like a webinar. So you could have only the people that you want on the meeting itself, and then you stream that to Facebook, people can watch, they can interact with comments, very similar to a webinar, without actually having to have a webinar, the webinar feature, because that is significantly more expensive. Camelia, I think if you could just email us at support@getoiling.com, we can probably help you out better, and you know, maybe dig into your account and look at, look at that, so we can get you sorted. I think that's it.
All right, cool, cool. Yeah, definitely, reach out to us, Camelia, and we can work with you on that specific thing that you're dealing with there. We've got a couple more questions coming in. Since I have a Maryland number, I tried the Pennsylvania number, it wouldn't work, so I just selected a Maryland number instead. Yeah, you can, guys, when, when you're setting up your two-way texting, you can decide what, what area code, if you want your, your number to spell something, you've got that option there, you can create that however you like. And then you mentioned, Yvonne, that there's an offer of Zoom for $15. How does it differ from what's in GetOiling? You get the $15 Zoom for free with us, it's included.
And also for that, so with the $15 with what Young Living just came out with, it offers up to, Greg, was it 500 or 600 attendees? But with Young, with us, right now, we have certain cutoffs. So if you email us, we can send you some extra pricing for Zoom attendees up to 300 right now. So if you would like to get more information about how to add that extra capacity to your Zoom, please email us at support@getoiling, and we can help you figure out that as well.
Fabulous. All right, thank you, guys, for sticking around so long, asking so many great questions. If you're still feeling stuck, if we weren't able to dig in, like Camelia, for instance, like please reach out to us, really excited to help you and get in with you one-on-one to get that fixed and worked out. Grateful to all of you, happy to have you as part of this community, and look forward to seeing you next week on another live session, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. If you're watching this as a replay and want to join in the future, we'll see you guys next week.
Bye, guys, see you next week.